Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Mashpee School Committee meeting of August 22nd, 2018. We call the meeting order at 6:03 PM. First item on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance, two sides of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with originality and essence.
Next on the agenda is public comment. I do not believe we have any. Is there anybody signed up? Thank you, Kathy. All right, moving along. Next item is the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe. Do we have representative from the tribe? We do not. If they come later on, we'll go back to that item. So now we'll move on. Next item on the agenda is the request to name the library, and you have a handout in your packet, pages one and two. It's the individuals. I know Terry's here and some other people who should be with us. If you want to come to the microphone, if you have anything that you want to say about it.
Hi. Thank you so much for putting us on your agenda. It was very important for us as former members of the Mashpee School Committee. I have Kathy Lynch here with me, Steve Paxton, Peter Thomas, and Mary Ann McDonald-Flaherty could not be here with us this evening, but we literally thought it was very, very important that this town not lose sight of all of the things that Janice Mills did to make the Mashpee Public Schools what they are today. And we thought it was appropriate to name a library after her because she was a voracious reader. She's the one that started the tradition of giving all the places you'll go Dr. Seuss book out to our graduates. She is the reason we have this building here. We would not have our own Mashpee High School if it hadn't been for Janice Mills. We thought it was really important. As well as she's the reason we're our own superintendency union, school district. We used to be with Sandwich. She's the one that was a mover and a shaker to make our own union. So we had our own superintendent, and we could do what we wanted to do, what was best with Mashpee kids. I, for one, and I know I speak for my colleagues to the left of me, that Mashpee would never be the same if we hadn't had Janice Mills here to ferry things through for our children. She never, ever, ever lost sight about what her role was, and she reminded us what our roles were when we were on the school board. It was always to do what's best for kids. She never lost sight of that. And Mashpee's kids have been very fortunate over the years that we had someone that was such an advocate for children and educating our children. And not only just, you know, the reading and writing and the arithmetic, but she made sure that they had a well-rounded education. So it would be, we think it would be a great honor, and I believe her family concurs with us. We have her daughter Nancy. We have the infamous Earl Mills here as well. I believe they concur with us that it would be an appropriate thing to name some major feature of these buildings in honor of Janice Mills. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thanks, Terry.
Terry. So I guess the one question I would have is, I know we had discussed talking about the letter asked about specifically the high school library that we're currently in. And we had also brought up the idea of the Quaschig Library, whether being newly renovated. And that's where we hold our meetings, and that's where the school committee meetings are held. I know there really wasn't, you know, too much of a concern as to which one. I don't know if there's any further discussion on that, or what kind of input from any of the--
I would defer to the other people that are here, especially her family as well.
I think one of the things that's important to note, as a woman who was not originally from Mashpee--
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Terry. That's hard to follow. Was that she didn't lose sight of the education of children, but also of the natives of the town. And I think the shape of this library is distinctive and denotes the importance of Native Americans. And not only that, but what we all share culturally and what we can get from each other. And I think that might be something to consider.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Earl Mills, and there is a representative here of the Indian tribe. I'm the chief, the only chief I know since 1956, and I'm the only one that has any documentation. So I'm the chief, and I represent a tribe. And Janice represented a tribe because she was the secretary of the Old Indian Meeting House Authority in the early days, when that's what it was called, the Old Indian Meeting House Authority Incorporated. And Janice was on that board for 50 years. Janice was continually writing about school committee and what her next meeting was going to be. We ran a restaurant, and I said, "Where's the lady that belongs out front?" "Oh, she's gone to the school committee meeting." She was continually going to school committee meetings. She was a teacher herself. She was an English teacher. And then she went back to school, then she became a home economics teacher. Just a kind of change there. I'm not sure how that happened, but that's what she wanted to do. And Janice gave every bit of, well, between the restaurant and the meeting house and helping, you know, at the meetings of the meeting house and then attending school committee meetings. School committee meetings were not very distant second from being out front to pour a Bloody Mary or to grant someone a right to come into the restaurant and take part in the restaurant. So I see Janice, even though she's my former wife, you know, and passed on, she was just just a person that read all the time and was always writing. And she had a penmanship that goes back way before most of you here, because they don't write like that anymore, with that cursive writing and all that, about what was going to go on at the next meeting. So I just thought, you know, the background that I have with Janice and why I think she needs some kind of recognition like this. Thank you for having me here.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else have any questions or comments or anything?
It sounds like the high school--
Yeah, that's--
They're on the street now.
All right. So I know according to our policy that we had just readopted a couple of meetings ago, the reason why it's not on the agenda to vote is because we're supposed to have a waiting period. So we're going to put it on the next agenda. Was it September 12th, I believe, is our next meeting? Put it on the next agenda for a vote. I concur, I agree, this is a great tribute, and, you know, I personally believe that it's something that we should do, but we will put it on the next agenda for a vote. No, thank you very much. I appreciate you all coming in.
Yes.
I wouldn't blame you.
Only former school committee members.
Better than Terry. Yeah, exactly.
Well, it's nice to have some butts in the chairs.
Yeah.
I said it was nice to have some butts in the chairs. Thanks.
Even though briefly.
It is a little warm.
Is it--
Chris.
All right.
I think we have somewhere four tribes.
Okay, we're gonna, okay, we'll backtrack now that we do have representative from-- huh? No, she's not coming.
Mark is pointing.
No, you don't want to?
Maybe you should ask her.
Oh, okay. So she will be here. Okay, we'll come back to it. We'll come back to it. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, in the meantime, we'll move on to the next item, which is the report of the superintendent. I'll turn it over to Mr. Boe.
All right, so we have Mrs. O'Brien. Mrs. O'Brien, come up to share an update on the Quaschig School Project.
I have--
I don't know if you've driven by Quaschig lately. I know there's a lot of speculation when you drive by, is it going to be ready? But everything points to go. We are actually ahead of schedule in terms of the windows. We had four classrooms that we are going to relocate temporarily. They'll probably start the year for about a week out of their normal locations, but those windows were not expected to even to start until we were already in school. So we're about two weeks ahead of schedule, which is great. The roof is completely done, but now they're putting the banding around the roof, so that will be completed as well. And they are going to finish that this week, and so we'll be able to check the playground, make sure there is no debris in the playground, and be able to open that on time as well. And that's in, the builders will take care of that as well as DPW as well. So that's good news. Today, tomorrow, and Saturday, they're going to be finishing up all the tiling by the front entrance and in front of the window area, they had to replace the tiles there. So that's all being installed right now. We had a little bit of a delay with some of the doors with the FOB access with those, and it's a delay in the materials, not really in the construction. So the main door will be set and some other strategic doors, but that material is coming along. The library looks fabulous. The new rug is down, all of the material, all the new shelving units, the tables are all being delivered tomorrow. So that installation will be taken care of tomorrow, which is great. We do have the new circulation desk in place currently, but it came in two different shipments. So that's really exciting. I'm looking forward to that. The courtyard and the Liberty wing and then new wing of our building is magnificent. It's really, really beautiful. It's all ADA accessible now, so they put in a walkway from one end of it down to the other. It looks fabulous. I don't even want to call it grass. It had been weeds growing in there because they couldn't tend to it during the school year. All of that was stripped out, and now there's river rock. And where the bushes were against the building, it's been all mulched and pulled back. It looks fabulous. And we can see it because we can see out of our windows, which look terrific. Not all of our shades are installed yet. They are being put in. Each classroom will have shades in them about, I don't know the number, but that whole Liberty wing does have them currently, and the back of the building also has the shades installed, so that looks really good. The contractors have been working really diligently this week to kind of wrap up, I'll just call it their mess that they've had throughout the building, because as they have worked in every single bathroom, every single classroom, as you can imagine, their materials are spread throughout the building. Even in the back loading dock, we had a lot of different supplies from the plumbers, and those have been picked up so we can actually take delivery of paper and math books that are due to arrive either today or tomorrow or Friday. So I think the progress is coming along really well. The building isn't going to look like it looks normally when we open in September, but it really is looking beautiful. The windows are terrific. They open. I just can't believe what we're so thankful for, windows that open. But it does look great. The one bit of construction that will be done this week is there will be a construction wall put up in one of our sixth grade hallways, right in the very front of the building. When you're walking toward the main entrance, all of the windows to the right and on either side of the front door, those windows will be demoed, and the framing and the replacements will be done right after school begins. So there will be a temporary construction wall put up in that area. So that's coming. But again, this is ahead of schedule because that wall was going to be put up when students were back in the building, which would have been a little tenuous. But we can do that before students and teachers arrive, so it will be less impactful for the students and learning. So, looks good. The fire department came through the other day, the building inspector came through on Tuesday as well, and I can't speak for them, and they're certainly going to come back through, but they let us stay in the building, so it's all very positive. So you'll have to come and visit us.
I had to say about the bathrooms, so they have a Corian countertop that goes straight across. Every new sink faucet is censored, you don't touch anything. They put new hand dryers in there, they're super powerful there.
They work.
Four years.
Yes.
Fine, I can resign right now.
And then the new epoxy floor that was in-- well, everything has Mary Kate touched it, because she picked everything up. It's looking very good. Today in my office, because they've done my windows, but they haven't put the Corian across the top, but two guys that came in, they're, he told me, his sole job is they repaint everything before they put that term piece in, so that every exterior wall got painted. That's what these two guys did. So they have this pretty well-planned system.
Every student bathroom has a handicap accessible stall right now, where before we did not have one. It's pretty impressive, the work they did. They had to take down cinder block walls, move them back, change the size of even just the door frames to make sure there was enough clearance. The bathrooms look really very lovely, even in the main office. We had a small bathroom that had to be converted to a handicap accessible unit, and it's, they did just a beautiful job. The nurses' office, again, had to take down a wall, expand, because the nurses' office did not have any handicap accessible bathroom. So now one wasn't touched, one unit, but the other is handicap accessible, which will make a huge difference for, just to help our students and to have that available. So, it looks fabulous. Even the new toilets are self-flushing, so--
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so it looks terrific, I have to say. Our exterior doors, one of the big changes, all of the hallway doors used to have a solid panel, so you couldn't see out. And for safety, when the fire alarm went off, you really didn't know what you were going out to. Now there is a glass piece in each of those doors, a little side light along those doors that was taken out, so now the doors are much wider than they used to be. And it's just so pleasing to look down the hall and see green trees and to see outside and let that light in. It really gives the school a completely different feel than being closed off and not being able to see outside. It, I'm really very impressed and pleased with the progress so far.
That's great.
I'm anxious for the kids and the teachers to see it. They'll love it.
And I think one thing Mary Kate talked about in the past, but every exterior door is blue on the outside and also blue on the inside. But if it's a door that opens into a courtyard, there's silver on the inside, so kids will know clearly which doors are exit doors versus just a door that goes into the courtyard. And I think that was another good decision.
Yes, that was a secondary decision, but I think it makes so much sense, and it blends in with that silver color of the windows and the frame, so it just, your vision, you just feel like it's wide. Just all makes sense. It's all pulled together. Looks good.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
So are, what happens at the start of the school year? Like, does the school resource officer go around and check, like, security-wise, to just make sure everything's secure and functioning? Or do you do that, or how, now that we've had doors replaced and stuff like that?
All of those doors, we're working with Simplex, with our security and alarm system. They have all been in to check those doors. Because there is a little bit of a delay with some of that material, not all of the doors will have that FOB access that I was looking for, which, but they'll still have a key access, which we'll be able to enter or exit for safety reasons. It will be installed, but that probably won't be ready. There are six available units. There are about 12 doors that need to have that--
Okay.
--put in. So we'll be in good shape, and I know the fire department, the way they went through the building and the building inspector the other day, they would not let it, us be there if it wasn't considered safe.
Thanks.
But, yeah.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I will tell you, I appreciate the updates. Jeff and I were just talking, a little bit concerned driving by--
Yeah, yeah.
It looks, you know, like it's behind, but, and it's not often that you hear, especially a construction project of this magnitude, that they're ahead of schedule. So that's--
Yes. There are parts that are ahead and parts that aren't, but the parts that we need to be ahead on, that's really good.
I appreciate the update.
In every day, when you're in that building, you see the progress that is being made. The hallways are actually passable now. It truly was all summer a complete construction site. It was a hard hat area, and still is. There is, and this is very important to know, there is no public access to Quaschig School tomorrow or Friday. None. No one can go in that building. It is considered a construction site. It is a hard hat area, but as of Monday, it will be open. We will be having our instrument rental night on Monday with approval from the fire and the building inspector and the contractors. We will be able to have our teachers in all next week. And I cannot say enough about Quaschig teachers. They're amazing. They have been so patient, so cooperative. Usually all summer, they stop in, they want to do something. Come August, they're in setting up their classrooms. Their first opportunity to come into Quaschig School will be Monday after our opening meetings, which would be after 3 o'clock. So they truly have, with our building meeting, too, they probably have four days to prepare for students, their room. So they have been so supportive, so professional. They're just outstanding. It's a great team, and I really appreciate them for what they're doing and attitude.
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Next in the packet, you have the personnel update, which was actually through probably yesterday. Mary Kaminsky is our BCBA therapist. She's a district-wide physician, lots of years of experience, and we're very grateful for her at the Coombs School. Our new teachers are Jennifer Blackburn for preschool, Catherine McDonough is preschool, Jessica Ryan is a grade one teacher, and Elena Murphy is a special ed teacher at Quaschig. There are only two new teachers. Courtney Ream is the EL teacher. David Williams will teach grade six. And then at the middle high school, Eduardo McDonald is the dean of students, grades 10 through 12. Annika Lawson is a math teacher. Grace Wang is the Mandarin teacher. Elizabeth Pierce is a French teacher. Ashley Edwards for special education teacher. And not on your list is Ben Womet, who's a very professional. We do have one English position currently, which I think has sort of built, I just, she hasn't been processed yet. Yep?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the bowling prevention and intervention plan. That was in the packet. I hope that you had the time to review it. There weren't any significant changes. This is required to be updated, I think it's every three years. The only thing we did was we tweaked a little bit in on the report form and removed a Coombs form that was in there that didn't seem to make sense. But it's posted, it'll be posted on the website, our old ones are probably posted on the website. This is the desk we formed and follow the guidelines. But I think we have to--
I move to approve the bowling prevention intervention plan as presented.
Second.
All right, motion by Jeff, second by George. Is there any comments? Nicole, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And yes. Animus.
Okay. Update on our essay challenge. We received 33 essays. 32 had the surveys with them. I believe the person that didn't do the survey, I know who that person is, but anyway, we have-- we'll be-- we have 32. So Tom Shane has taken a set of the essays, and Nicole has a set, I have a set, Hope has a set, the principals have given a set. To narrow down your top four, there are many that are really quite well-done and informative, and even if it's not a winning one, there are so many snippets of great information in them for me to share that, if that's my plan. But we are hoping to meet Friday morning to sort of narrow down to see if we have sort of all agreed on top essays and make a selection. If the person who was chosen is available, I would love to have them come to our station and read their letter on Monday. But that, we don't know if that's how it's going to lay out. It could be a student that went off to college, but based on who it is, we were going to wait to decide what kind of celebration we wanted to do in recognition of the person. I think it was pretty successful. I mean, I, we might have wanted more essays, but I think there was a lot of confusion we found on the night of the national night hours. A lot of people that we went up to were like, "Oh, I thought you had to be a resident," or "I thought you had to be a parent," so all of that. But if we do this on a regular basis, I'd share people with you. And that's good. I think more will be--
I think 32 is awesome.
I think--
Jeff said he'll cover it next time.
Yeah, I got it. One hundred cents.
Anybody want to add anything to?
No, I was just going to say that I started to go through them, and they are really good.
Yeah.
I mean, I've only gotten like a third of the way through. I was like, wow, I'm going to need to dedicate some time. Because it's going to take a while to get through them and then rank them, and so. But yeah, I think, I think 32 is great.
It is. Very good.
So, success.
Thank you.
Camp Falcon update, I am going to throw over to Mrs. Loykoe, because she is Camp Falcon's co-chair. She knew this.
Give her a microphone.
I did.
Dramatic pause.
Make sure, make sure you can have a microphone.
I don't usually talk into this.
Just ahead of time, before she shares, I want to publicly acknowledge Mrs. Loykoe, because really, she's the face of Camp Falcon. She's the behind-the-scenes planner, and the amount of work that goes in before we open on day one is huge, and organizing and all of that. And then even throughout the camp, although she's not the administrative assistant working at the camp, she is the go-to person, problem solves all the time, so.
And always puts the needs of kids first, which if a kid does not like a session, Mrs. Loykoe will make sure they can change. And that, to me, that, I didn't mean to interrupt, but like, that is jinnornously helpful.
Great. I'm glad. So, so basically, we had about 125 children enrolled in the, all the five weeks. But it's, where it's five weeks, they can choose to just be there one week, two weeks, the whole five weeks, first session, second session, because it runs from 8 to 12:15 with a break in the middle with a snack and water provided by Camp Falcon. So what we had is we stayed under budget. We had 19 activities. The average day, there would be a week, I should say. The first week, there was 166 kids that participated, and each week it went down just a little bit, and then the fifth week, there was 91. So we are looking at maybe, you know, we don't need to do the whole five weeks, or maybe we need to offer some different activities. Foods and physical fitness were huge. I mean, we couldn't even, we had, you know, move kids around, so they really liked those. And the fact that we were here at Mr. Balistraci's school, not that we don't love Quaschig, however, they had a woodworking class, which was like, the kids went crazy over. They had a makerspace, and they had a kitchen right there. So when they were doing their cooking classes, they were, they had everything they needed. You know, last year when we did cooking, we were doing it in a classroom, and the girl had to go down to the cafeteria every time, you know. So really, we're thinking of possibly suggesting that as a future Camp Falcon.
No good deed.
Yay. And Mark's staff was fabulous to help, because I didn't really know the building very well, so they were wonderful to work with. So overall, the feedback I got so far, we're going to do a survey out to all the homes and to kind of get a feel for my parents' stuff, but most of the kids were all really excited, loved coming, were very happy. When they weren't happy, we made them happy by putting them somewhere else. That's all. It was all for fun and learning, but mostly fun. So I'd say it was a success, and like I said, we stayed under our budget, Mr. Funk.
Yes.
We did very well, because our budget was 45, and we did about 38. So we did have 19 activities. We didn't want to cut it down a little bit, maybe offer more specific, but that's all stuff everyone will look at and put together ideas.
So you said there were--
So you said there were 166 kids the first week?
Yes.
So how?
Well, no, you know, the girl did the numbers for me. That does seem kind of odd, but a lot of kids will stay. Some kids will just take one session.
Right.
This was both sessions.
What do you mean?
So there's, some kids just come eight to 10.
Oh, I see.
And then some kids will come 10:15 to the 12. But they didn't come to the first session, but then the total.
Maybe she did it by session, but it'd be important, because
I can break that down.
166 is a lot higher than 125.
I know, I know. And she broke that down for me, but let me look at it a little bit closer too. Because I know that was kind of confusing me as well.
Yeah.
We did have a lot more kids the first week, though.
Yeah.
Another reason I like it at the high school is it exposes the kids that will be coming up here to this environment, and they became very comfortable and it's sort of like, would take away, like if you were in fifth or sixth grade, when you eventually came up here, you have a little bit of comfort level because of that exposure. So as many things as we can sort of cross over between schools, I think is really good.
Yeah, I thought the kids would be really, you know, confused about the building and everything, but they just came in and within a day, they knew where they were heading.
We're just the ones that are confused about.
Yeah, exactly. So it worked out really well.
If we, if we, if we do decide to move it to the high school, I think it'd be great if we opened it up to one more grade, and that's the people that are coming to seventh.
Yes.
I agree. I agree, Jeff, because there were seventh graders, a few that we did take.
I mean, perfect introduction to the building and everything.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
I agree.
So that's that. And I'll look at those numbers better.
I also think, I would be curious to know how many families we had. So we do have the ability to identify households now, so maybe we should find out how many households we had this year versus last year. Whether we're growing, whether we're hitting the same families, or whether if we tweak something, we might get more families.
I do have all that from last year, so I can certainly work on making comparisons there and seeing.
Is this the third year?
Third year. Third year. And I think this was, did we do five weeks in the very beginning? I don't know if we did. I thought we did four the first year.
That was four.
Four.
Yeah, four the first year. And I just have mixed feelings about the five. I don't know if it's a little too long, you know, only because the numbers are low. But the 91 that came in the last week, you know, had a good, a good experience, so I guess we can just see, but.
We're trying to figure out too, what are the better weeks? Is it good to have two weeks, a break, and then two weeks?
Mm-hmm.
Or, you know, because there are family vacations, so we don't.
That's right. And it was nice, because a lot of the kids that were in ESY, which is Extended School Year Program, were housed there as well. So they would have to attend their, you know, ESY in the morning, or I should say the first session, because I always throw that up. It's all morning, but first session, and then they could hop right over to Camp Falcon. So they were able to stay and, you know, we had a son that did that, and he loved it.
It was a great time, yeah.
Yeah, so it works out well.
I think that's one of the biggest advantages of that Camp Falcon model, is blending of extended school year students with students that are there to, like, sometimes some of the school can have sort of an image issue, and so everybody was all together.
Yeah.
And it helps.
Okay.
Thanks, Kathy.
You're welcome.
I think I handed out to you a schedule for convocation. It's the moment to dig Mashpee Wampinawak schools across the top. That's just for your information. You're welcome to come. I, Chris is working on convocation.
I will be there, yes. Speaking too.
But you are all welcome to attend any of the events all day. But that's just for your information. We'll make sure you get it shared also. Come for lunch, George or Cora. She knows who that is.
She knows who we've gone to lunch. That is Monday, yes.
So are you guys looking at that? School choice update is the next page in the packet. And so you'll see that we were offering 38 seats this year. We currently build 16 of them. We have 22 spots.
What is that, places? In total?
You wanted to know what our total school choice numbers would be. So I know, I don't have it. I had it once, I knew the number of seniors left.
You're dealing with how many left?
It was five.
Or approximately.
I thought it was five. But I will have that. You don't know.
How many?
Graduated last year. How many school choices?
How many graduated?
How many school choice kids graduated? I think it was five.
Five, that would bring it down to approximately 45, because we have.
No, we have like 100.
We had 100, I'm sorry. We had 100, so five, bring it down to 95.
But we don't know how many of these are new.
Yeah.
They're all new.
Also, the 16s are all new.
Right.
We should have a neck game.
Basically, one 10, one 11, right in that ballpark.
I can email you that too as well, but so we should be out, I mean, coming out higher up, because we didn't lose 16. But some people do lose who were choice kids.
Oh, yeah.
And that'll fluctuate all year.
Right.
Yeah.
And then they make the adjustment at the end of the year, and then that's what we bring forward.
We just had several withdrawer, actually, school choice kids that I just got notification of, so a lot of that's happening now at this time of year, you know.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments on anything? Thank you very much. I've seen Natana walk in, so we are going to go back to the agenda item for the update from the Mashpee Wampinawak.
Hello, everybody.
Hi.
So the update from education right now is that there are going to be a lot of changes this year. So you may or may not have heard that I resigned as the education director as of.
Did not know that.
There you go. So by the, at the end of this month, I will no longer be in education. Actually, I'll be going back to language part-time as the teacher, teacher fluency trainer. But so we will be welcoming in Roxanne Brown as the new director. She's fantastic, and we're really, really lucky, really lucky to have her. She has a ton of experience at the federal level with Indian education. She's, she is a tribal member, actually the daughter of Uncle Earl, who was just here. So anyway, that's exciting. There also will be a change in the college readiness program. As manager for that program is also resigning at the end of September. So that job is, I believe, being posted this week, so be more to come on who will be in charge there. So, but other than that, we're, you know, it's pretty much business as usual. Everything's, scholarship is, lots and lots of students taking advantage of that. And, you know, programming is being planned, and we're, we're up and running, getting ready for the school year, so.
And I just wanted to add, from the language department perspective, we will continue to collaborate with Natana. I've kept Principal Balistrachi and Mr. Rumberger updated. So she had offered one day a week of the high school language class last year, and we have grant funds to sustain that commitment through our department. So she'll still be co-instructing the high school Wampinawak, Pasek, and Nies classes, so levels one and two. And she'll also be working for us a couple of days a week, helping boost the language fluency levels of our teachers. So one of the challenges we found for our second language learner teachers and working with very young children is that there's a lot of repetition in your day. And so as a speaker of Wampinawak language, it can be a challenge to continue to grow. So we're really fortunate that we've been able to bring in some grant funding over the summer that will enable us to contract with Natana as she works with us part-time and then also is with her fellowship, which is actually a research position that also looks at some of the work that we're doing in early childhood language education. And then I also wanted to just bring back to your attention, we had talked in, I believe it was May or June, about recognizing Makai Sekwiku as a private, tribally operated school in Mashpee, and just wanted to let folks know that we've exchanged some information in terms of student assessment and the way that we track our students' progress toward common core standards. So that conversation is, is ongoing. We'll have a very small first grade cohort, probably only two or three children this fall, but we've been awarded some new grant funding so that we're going to implement teacher training so that we're able to add up to grade four over the next several academic cycles. So we do hope that our class of 25 children this fall will continue to expand incrementally over the coming years. And at the same time, we'll also be slightly reducing the amount of Wampinawak language instruction during the day, so the kids now are receiving between 75 to 85% of their school day in Wampinawak. And as they get into grade three and four, that will start to come down a little bit. We're still working out what those percentages will be. But we're very attuned to helping them transition successfully into an English dominant environment. And thanks to our partnership with Natana, we'll be able to continue to offer those supports. And we're still waiting as well to hear about the grant proposal that we submitted with the superintendent's office to the U.S. Department of Education's Office of English Language Acquisition. So that would offer some comprehensive K-12 language literacy opportunities in both English and Wampinawak. But we also did arrange to offer some after-school programming, regardless of whether the funds are awarded. So the Department of Ed is usually about a month behind in making their awards, so that they usually anticipate notification by early to mid-August, so we think that probably means mid to late September. We're just sort of proceeding as though we'll be offering some Quashnet after-school programming a couple of days a week. And then if we get this Oeela grant, we'll be able to offer three days weekly at Coombs and Quashnet or combined opportunity for children in Wampinawak language. So that's the updates that we have from, from our department, but you will still get to see Natana, as will we, so.
Just my last day here as, as the education director.
And we've all worked with Roxanne previously. She was the assistant director of tribal planning and is really a fantastic writer and communicator and educator, so we're really excited to, to work with her going forward.
Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, thank you.
The Quashnet after-school programming, is that for just tribal kids or all kids?
I believe it's for children in the Indian education program.
Okay.
But we haven't actually finalized that process yet. I think we talked about it as an opportunity for tribal children, because there are lots of other opportunities, but.
I don't know if that definitely got worked out.
Yeah, it wasn't really finalized.
It was sort of equal access conversation, so we had to talk about that a little bit. Yeah, I was just thinking about like the after-school clubs and how it would be, I didn't know if that was, if that's what you were referring to, or something different, just in Indian ed. It would mimic the after, like, we talked about having it be an after-school club, like knitting was, or, you know. Or the comic books. Right, exactly. But doing some of that through the use of the language. So that was sort of the vision of it.
I think our teachers are open to working with other children. You know, we found, like with the high school class, it tends to be predominantly tribal children who enroll in these opportunities, because it's something that's important in their household.
Yeah.
So that might continue to be the case with the after-school programming.
I, see, I look at it, the flip of, which is if we created opportunities, maybe younger grade levels, that then you might see more non-Wampinawak kids interested in high school. Yeah. I'm just really keen on this idea of really just sort of building the, the community together. And I understand everything that you guys are doing, and it's important in its own right, but I just, I want to see us grow together too.
Absolutely. Yeah, and I think, so it'll be primarily Tudi or Eleanor Coombs offering the after-school programming. And she has, in her work with lunch bunches, especially at Quashnet School, often offered a bring a friend day to lunch bunches, because it is something that other kids really want the chance to learn the songs or learn more about some of the games and activities. So it may be something that children are interested in participating in after-school as well. And I, I know Tudi has been very welcoming to, to working with whatever children have been interested in attending.
Yeah, I think one of my kids went to one of those once. Oh, great. And then you mentioned earlier, up to grade four over the next few academic cycles. Do you mean school years?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I just was checking.
And I just want to add, we took our new, new employees today. We, one of the stops on our bus tour was the tribe. We had a great tour. Trish was fabulous. And what was really impactful for me is there was a summer camp going on, and the kids were learning about the owl, and I don't know who was teaching it. But the kids were so engaged, and I learned the difference between the hawk wing and the owl wing, and how silent the owl wing is. And that's why at night they can rely on their hearing, because they're not flapping like the hawk. But it was just, I was so happy that all of our new employees got to see the face of our children in that setting. So I was, it was a great experience for everyone to see, so thank you.
So are, do you have plans to reach out to Roxanne, where we can have a, or have you already met her?
Well, it's the first time I get. We, she was just hired, I think, earlier, earlier last week, so it's, she hasn't started yet. She starts Monday. But she and I are, she and I will meet next Thursday about sort of the transition, and I'll, you know, make sure she has all the right contacts and everything to.
Okay. One of the things I mentioned today in an email exchange was just when we were going to do the fall meeting at tribal headquarters. And so if we were going to do October like we did last year, we'd need to make that decision pretty quick. So if you could just put that on your.
Yep, she, yeah, she and I had talked about, just the partnership meetings in general, so she's aware of that. And this as well.
Thank you. We loved having you.
Thank you very much.
And I'm glad that you're not going anywhere.
Yeah, no, I will.
I know, you couldn't get away if you tried, but.
So true. Even the fellowship is really back, circling back again.
But your, your leadership over the last year has really been appreciated. I'm speaking for myself, but I know everyone else agrees, and I'm grateful, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I don't know whether Tim Rumberger had extended the invitation. I told him to about Monday is our convocation, and it's an all-day PD, there's different pieces, but you're welcome to attend. If Rox, I know it's a first day, so Roxanne probably wouldn't want to do that, but anyone that works with, with the schools is welcome to attend.
Okay. Thank you.
Somebody have anything else?
No, I'm just waiting for the adult language classes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next up, we have the reporter, the business administrator, Paul Phong.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight I have, before you, you have a list of all the student activities for the high school and the middle school. You noticed when we first presented, when I first presented the student activity accounts, guidelines, and procedures, we had in there a list of numbers. Now we have assigned after-school programs, activities to those numbers. You'll notice that the account number is pretty simple, starting with 101. One is the high school, two is the middle school. So you'll see on the second page, the middle school student activities and the high school on the first page. Basically, the, the high school and the middle school are the only two schools that have actually specific student activities. The elementary schools have accounts, but through those accounts go their picture money, go the Stop and Shop A1 program, which brings in, I sat with Mary Kate last week, brings in quite an amount of money. And what they do is, throughout the year, they spend that on field trips and, and things for the student. As I said, when we first started this student activity, these are student activity monies, they are the students' monies, and they're spent at the discretion of the principals. So the high school's a little different. They're, each of these clubs raises funds. You'll see the first balance sheet at the October meeting that will give you an idea of a starting point of what kind of funds each of these accounts have. And I plan to, I plan to report out briefly at the finance meetings in a quarterly fashion, so you'll see four times a year. So you'll see a balance sheet in October, next one will be January, and so forth. So, you'll see a balance sheet in October, next one will be January, and so forth. So, the first thing I need is approval of these student activities for the high school. And since they're on any for the elementary school, we're only voting on these particular accounts, activities.
And middle school also?
Pardon me?
High school and middle.
Yeah, we can vote on them together.
Okay.
Yep.
So, move.
Matt, okay, I second.
Motion by George, seconded by Nicole.
What's interest?
There are two accounts, and I'll go through it briefly. There's what we call an agency account. So, all the funds go into what they call an agency account, which is an interest-bearing account. Then, there is the checking account. And at the last meeting, the last finance meeting, we had a discussion about what the balances were going to be in the checking account.
Right.
Because there's, there's money in, this money's earning interest. So, all of these clubs have balances. They can be anywhere from $10, I'll use figures, to hundreds of dollars. They're earning interest. What happens is the, if they're going to need a check, they're going to have to do a warrant, which you signed. We move the money from the agency account into the checking account.
Okay.
But, the checking account was voted last week not to have a balance of more than $10,000.
Right.
Okay, at any one time. And that's if we needed to get a check out rather quickly without going to the warrant. And we have, we've had those instances where the treasurer, the town treasurer, would move that money. So, that's basically what it is. So, the interest each month goes into that interest account.
So, it's its own?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, the principal can determine how he wants to expend that.
Okay. That's fine. I just wanted, and what's PBIS?
PB.
Positive Behavioral Interventions and Sports.
Okay.
The clubs, you know, I just kind of typed what they give me. So, that's why I have Mr. Bellistraci here tonight with me to explain any club that I...
What's FBLA?
Asian Business Leaders of America.
We should write that out.
I will, I will correct that on the next copy.
And then, why are there several accounts for CTE?
CTE has several programs under its early.
Okay.
So, for example, something goes into the ProStar program that's under the umbrella of CTE, but it's all under, you may have left that out.
The 106, that one, I'll, I'll take Mr. Bellistraci. I split the 106. 106 is career and technical education. When we did, we are Mashby, hashtag, we are Mashby, we set up a subdivision of the 106. Hashtag, we are Mashby is 106A and career and technical. All his other accounts are under 106B.
I see.
And I just did that because we wanted to separate that out. And you're going to see the balances in those accounts separately.
So, is there a 106, a 106A and a 106B? Or is there just?
There's a 106A. That's, that's hashtag, we are Mashby, the store. And then, there is career and technical education.
Okay.
They're two separate.
Okay, so, we should just amend this list because it looks like there's three accounts right now.
Okay.
You know, just, yeah, so, that was why I was asking.
Would you like me to then put separate numbers or?
No, no, it just, it looks like there's three.
Okay.
106, 106A and 106B.
Yeah, I should have.
Yeah.
So, there's no 106.
There is no 106. You can say the rest. You can say the rest.
There's 106, yeah, there's people.
Yeah.
But, it includes 106A and.
Right, I understand.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll just take that out. But, that was the purpose. We wanted to separate those out. I think that was the discretion Mr. Looney had with Mr. Bellistraci in keeping those two separate.
Yeah, that's fine.
But, still under career and technical.
Makes sense.
Okay.
Totally get it.
Should we have the agency accounts on here?
Pardon me?
Do we have the agency accounts on here?
You will when you see them, absolutely.
But, I mean, they're not here. So, shouldn't they be on here?
No, 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 no. There's one agency account.
Not one for high school, one for middle school, just one period?
No, there's one for each of them.
Okay.
Yeah, but one agency account for all of the.
Right, right, but shouldn't we be approving that account as well?
Uh, no.
No?
You don't have to. You'll see it, but then it'll all break down. So, in other words, you're going to see the agency account when I.
I'm just trying to be, I'm just trying to follow the rules in our, our new document.
Right, right. And these follow the rules.
It says we approve student activity accounts. If we don't consider the agency account a student activity account, then okay. But, it seems to me it is a big student activity.
Well, the, the agency account is made up by the student activity accounts. So, you've got a total, a total in the student agency account. Let's say it's $100,000. And you've got $10,000 in your checking account. So, you've got $110,000, $100,000 in the agency account, $1,000 in the checking account. Then, what happens is all of the, the student activity accounts, they will take that $110, $110,000 and will break it up. So, it's almost like you're reconciling with, when you vote these accounts, you're reconciling back to the agency account and the checking account. So, by voting on these, you're actually voting for those accounts anyway.
Okay.
Is it?
No, hey, no. I'm not going to split hairs, man. I'm good.
You're actually, yeah.
Asking a question.
Anybody else have any questions on it?
What's GSI?
GSI.
GSI. Government Service of the District.
Can somebody please get Nicole an acronym?
Okay, yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll correct those.
You know what, I'm with you.
I didn't understand.
I'll, I'll correct those.
And then, there's just a little typo too. So, you can have my copy.
Anyone else?
Thanks.
Are you good?
Yep.
We can keep going.
No, that's good. You know, editorial, it's my forte.
All right, so, we have a motion on the table for approval of the current student activity accounts by George, seconded by Nicole. If there's no more questions, discussion, Nicole, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes.
The second vote tonight is on the student activity account itself. You didn't have, you didn't have.
You want it?
I got it.
Okay.
Got it. By voting the student activity account, you are voting that you are going to be in compliance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 71, Section 47, which we've gone over, which is also in your policy manual. It's referred to in your policy manual as stated down below. I just need a vote on this. We have gone over this many, many times.
May, Mr. Chairman, we discussed this at the last finance working group.
Yes.
And our recommendation is to approve.
Okay. All right, so, that being said, and I know there's a lot of questions and stuff submitted over the last few meetings. So, if everybody's satisfied, anybody wants to make a motion, I'll take a motion now.
I move to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve the Student Activity Account Guidelines and Procedures by Nicole and seconded by George. Any other discussion?
Just to make the other committee members aware that I requested that in six months, we have this on an agenda to get some feedback from how it's going and, and whether we need to reorganize the document at all. I was assured that this was a living document and while I may not agree with the organization that it is flexible and can be changed in the future, so.
Yeah, we can always.
I just wanted to.
Do you have the power to change it?
Yeah.
And we do plan on reporting what quarterly?
Yeah, in other words, you know, December would be the end of the second quarter. So, we're going to start from July 1st of this year. You'll see that the first quarter is September 30th, we'll, then October.
Well, this isn't really an assignment for you. It's really an assignment for Mark and, and the folks using this to see, to make sure that it makes sense and that it, if we didn't miss something or there isn't a bunch of redundancies, things we can streamline or something like that.
Basically, what you're, you're voting on is, is the, the actual law. And then, anything that we put into this is backing it up.
Yep.
Great.
Be good, finally get this approved.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, so, we have a motion in a second. If there's no further discussion, Nicole?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
And yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
All right. Next item on the agenda is specifically unassigned and specifically assigned unfinished business. And we have the school committee working group updates. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Bo again.
So, I think if we talk about the finance working group, which has met, you wanted to do a summary. One thing that you have in front of you is a list of capital improvement items. And the finance working group looked at this. It's been a little bit edited since we met. And also, I met yes, yesterday, Tuesday, met with Town Manager Rodney Collins and Wayne Taylor, the Assistant Town Manager, to review this. They liked how it was organized. They had some ideas in terms of things that might fall in a different category like using community preservation money to look at all the fields and see what's going to happen with, with all of that. So, if you look at it, the technology upgrades, we, they wanted to sort of break out what is sort of an annual expense, so the first two are annual. Then, there was some one-time charges in there under the school security, except for maybe the visitor tracking badge system. The other four included items are very DPW-ish. So, in a conversation, that may be something that lands in DPW. What they did show me, just as an aside, yesterday was the warrant article that will be on October's town meeting where they're adding a school community member or designated to the capital improvement planning committee. They are also adding another member at large, so there'll be seven. They have to have a bond number. But, that's, that's really, that's fine.
Yeah. Good.
And they, they were in agreement with, you know, all of the things that we talked about on this list. What I told them is that the school committee, you know, would prioritize them and decide, you know, which things order operations. So, I don't know if you want to ponder it and then everybody get the feedback or talk about it tonight, but that was, I think that started as we reviewed the finance working group. We also, in the finance working group, looked at a draft of the narrative for budget FY20 and then, it was based, it wasn't built. And then, all the different things we agreed we wanted to put in, so that's.
We discussed the budget timeline as well to ensure that we're meeting all our timelines. And I think we'll meet that and that's part of the narrative. And I wanted to talk about the CIP real quick because we had a lot of discussions about this and we did not accept this as written, by the way. And we had a lot of questions specifically about the technology upgrades that Mr. Phong closes, answers back. Specifically, we asked about the wireless overhaul of Quashnet and Coombs. So, we wanted some more information on that.
Well, what Sean D'Erini had said was the previous sort of upgrade were dropping.
Access points.
Access points when we were doing testing, this is a much broader. Okay. On that piece. And the teacher PCs, he's, he has it, he has a multi-year spreadsheet and basically it's $50,000 per school, but it's a better, it's all in the space that are, it would have less.
I think we, I mean, we, we were comfortable with everything. I mean, that was a great list. I just know we had, I know George specifically had some questions about the first one and specifically that he wanted the safety to be the number one priority. But, that's really as far as I think we went for recommendations. Unless you have anything else, George?
I got a couple of questions, just on what Patty said right now. On the two things that were annual, what did the town manager say on technology upgrades?
So, they want to be able to sort of refine this number. And if they're going to lay it out in a multi-year plan capital, they would, they would want to know which ones are going to be occurring and which ones are not.
Okay.
Once every five or 10 years.
And on the security upgrades, the decision was made that that's public works to put that in?
No, I was going through this and I know that we asked for additional doors to be clogged at Coombs this year and through DPW, the quote was $5,000 a door. But, that is, that, that's a facility. It's no different than the locks and systems that have been put into the Quashnet project. Those really are. So, whoever, whatever umbrella it falls under, it's us saying that we really want this done. Now, some of it does fall under DPW.
Oh, okay, okay.
We were very excited about number three because it's much lower than we previously anticipated.
It does seem like it, yeah.
Yeah.
The other thing we didn't do is the, the list we requested that Patty, when they submitted it, did not prioritize any of it. So, the school committee would have a chance to look at this and decide which is number one, two, three, that sort of thing.
We went over that yesterday with Rodney that that's why he knows. He says at the bottom, you have to prioritize that list.
So, I have a question about that though because I would be asking you to tell me what you think is the most important.
Which I, I did in that meeting and I did as well, but it really needs to be sort of like a decision. The technology is ongoing and we become very reliant and that's an important piece in the building's security. Now, our buildings are secure and I don't feel concerned whether this is, you know, because this is FY20 requesting, so it's not going to, it's been happening anyway. But, the building's security improvements are definitely something I want to do. The auditorium is just a continual source of stress for using it. So, that really needs to be attention paid to, so.
But, this, so are you saying you sort of tiered this in your priority order?
Um, could say.
I mean, or is just the biggest number at the top? I mean, it's, it's.
No, no.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, you got roughly a million dollars here? Although, it's not totaled.
No, that's pretty, pretty much a lot of.
Yeah, 992 is what I get.
There's a question.
And then, there's a question mark at the end, so.
Yeah, that's going to be, that's.
The piece about the, this one down there about the fields and, and just the general condition of the fields, fixing a lot of fields could be community preservation money, but I do think that that's going way up there. FY20 is what he said, but Wayne was figuring that there were ways to work with that. So, I think giving them this list early enough, they can sort of channel like maybe this, you know, there might be some options that they know about.
Do we have any information on previous capital improvements? Like, so, I just joined the school committee, you know, so I'm new. How do I know what you guys have prioritized over the last five years, say?
The only thing I'm aware of has always been technology.
Yeah.
When I've gone to like the build planning construction and they reviewed a sheet, there are a lot of school things on there, but they're plant-based, the generator here, things I have to do. I mean, but no one ever had conversations with us. So, this is really the first time that I recall that we actually.
Wow.
First time as a, as a board that we've done this.
Oh.
Yeah.
So, I'm here for first.
Congratulations first.
Yeah.
You've been here a year and a half.
Yeah.
No longer new.
Newest.
Excuse me.
Well, so, I, I just, when I think about the school committee, I, I see my role as advocating for the district and the administration. So, I, I think, but I do have opinions about what I think would be good investments, but I wouldn't, I don't feel like it would be appropriate for me to, if you think security is the most important thing, then I, I got to go with what you think. I, I would, I guess, like the opportunity to argue that I think some, some infrastructure that enhances programming outside of technology, things like the sound system and the lighting and the auditorium and, and the Quashnet Gymnasium and things that are, have been persistent and ongoing problems are a good investment because it actually increases the overall quality of the school and all of our programming and offerings that are, you know, it's sort of, to me, it's sort of our presence to the public, because these are where all the events and all of the activities that the school is showcasing occur in those venues. And if we've made a lot of investments in classrooms and infrastructure, then I would say, let's hit something that is visible to folks inside and outside of the school. So that's my little on-the-spot plug. Please don't make me go to another performance where the mics cut out. I feel really bad for those actors.
Last night was tough.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it was.
So I wasn't even there, but I just took a stab in the dark.
And I guess I would also, in a way, agree, but at the same time, so you look at the technology, there are some upgrades that I can say probably absolutely needed. For instance, the replacement of the teacher PCs, having been in a lot of the classrooms, especially in Quashen, they're extremely old.
Yeah.
But then when you look at some of the other things, like, you know, reducing the number of servers, I can see how that would be important, and it would also save energy and things like that, but really, is it necessary right now? So, you know, even within the groups, I would say, okay, maybe some of the technology things are a priority, but maybe not the entire group. Where I would say, for the most part, security, I would put above some of the things in technology. So that's kind of where I wouldn't necessarily be able to prioritize them as a group, because I think certain things inside of groups are more important than other whole groups. So...
That's good. Good point.
And as I mentioned, at the finance working group, the security thing would be my top priority.
And I know, just to sort of add to Nicole's, Eric Kane had added that the gym teacher at the Quashen School feels that the current condition of the floor does contribute to more student use.
Yeah.
Yep.
Not including the parent PTO basketball game.
Just old people.
Yeah.
Careful.
What? Believe me, if I got up there and played basketball, I'd be hurt in the first five minutes of the game. Did it one?
Nothing to do with it.
Was it a...
Well, I'm excited to advocate for whatever we come up with.
This is great, I think it's awesome.
It's great.
Yeah, I'm very excited.
Yeah.
When do we have to give the town manager the capital improvement budget? Is that the 25th of September? Is that...
I don't, I don't think it's right at the beginning, I think it's further. I just posted it to him. You know, his timeline.
Okay.
Soon as I like our stuff.
Yeah, I mean, you have...
So we'll sort of line it up, but I think that in the admin team, maybe contribute to the official choices, they live in these roles, so I was surprised to hear that there are issues with student use and improvement for.
Yeah.
We'll let that be there.
And I mean, if the committee agrees, I mean, it wouldn't be too much trouble if you really wanted our input on priorities. Obviously, I wouldn't suggest it be the all-say-all, but if you did align it and maybe put it into something with a dropdown, you know, maybe like a Survey Monkey or something, but with a dropdown, I don't know how many items are on here, it looks like roughly 12, and then you just select one through 12 on each line item, kind of prioritize it that way. I don't know. Just a suggestion. No?
I don't think we can do that, yeah.
No.
If we vote on it afterwards, we can't do that.
What are you talking about?
Because we're out of open meeting, providing guidance on how we're going to vote at a meeting that's not open.
No, if only she sees. So Patty emailed us, kind of like we do with the...
Oh, I see, so then you're going to provide the information at the meeting.
Exactly, kind of like we do for our school committee.
Little video goals and that sort of thing.
Still, though, do you feel like you could rank these?
I don't know if I could or not, but that's why I kind of, if we want to do it, if the committee decided we wanted to do any kind of prioritizing, that's the way I would suggest we do it.
I mean, I'd like to see Patty's rank, and then I might advocate for something I feel strongly about, but...
Yeah, whatever, whatever you decide.
But I don't think I could, I could rank these.
No, I can't rank them.
But you did already, I mean, you made little comments about what you thought needs to be...
Yeah, but whether, but she said security could wait a year, you know, so if Patty doesn't think so.
Well, I think what she meant there is that if it goes in the FY20 budget, we won't see the security improvement for a year.
It's all FY20.
Because the money won't be available for another year.
So you weren't saying that wasn't a high, the highest priority? I thought that's what you said.
No, it is. I mean, in my world, if by the end of this, if by the end of FY19, there was any funding left as we approached May, maybe some of these pieces could be taken care of.
I see.
But these are up, as everybody understands, these are upgrades. These aren't holes in our security that we're trying to fill.
Yeah.
Yeah. Whoever.
We had holes, I mean, we've not seen it lately.
Yeah, we would, yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Okay. Guess we'll leave it at that?
I can't even remodel my kitchen for $25,000. How do we do three kitchens in three schools?
No, that's just an ongoing...
Equipment replacement and upgrades. I can't believe we can do anything for 25 grand.
Well, it would be every year, some different pieces could be...
Oh.
No, no.
So by the time we...
Like a steam oven one year across, oven over in my high school.
I see, so it's just a number, and each year we decide what it's going to be.
Mr. Gus.
All right. Does anybody else have anything on that?
Because what do you think the percentage of original equipment is?
There's a lot of it, a lot of it is...
Eighty percent? Seventy percent?
I don't know, about eighty.
Fifty percent?
Maybe fifty. No, we keep fixing them. A lot of the, you know, naturally, the refrigeration, you don't, you know, the walk-in, you don't replace, just replace the compressors.
You mean that pump?
I'm sorry, sir?
Did you mean that pump?
Oh, did you get it pumped?
No, no.
Oh, yeah, no, I didn't. That was completely unplanned, yeah.
I don't know if there's any other updates. We have not submitted the efficiency of the...
We have.
We have.
It's September 7th.
September 7th or not?
Oh, was it? I believe it was the 7th. Don't quote me on that, but I believe it was the 7th.
And we have the next outreach.
We contacted, Gail contacted us, and we responded.
We got that too, right, Nicole? The next outreach we got taken care of, and also the next finance working group.
Is September 18th that our number?
Yeah, outreach is the 20th. And I was just going to say that I think these meetings are when we should say to each other, hey, these are when the next meetings are, so if you have anything for these work groups, you need to direct your questions or comments or concerns to those work group members?
Sounds good.
Or do we do that here? Like you bring them to this meeting?
Bring them to this meeting, or...
I'm not keeping up. Could you say that one more time?
Would you try that again?
So, so we have these working groups, the three, to work on our goals, and these full school committee meetings are the only meetings where we, the full group, gets to talk about what is happening in those working group meetings. So what I was just going to say is that the outreach group is going to meet on September 20th, which is me and Jeff, and so if you have ideas or things that we need, you want us to take up or discuss, or what you think we should be doing, based on kind of how we left things at the retreat, I would love to hear them.
I do not have anything right now.
Okay. That makes sense.
That's a good point.
But I think we have another school committee meeting before that meeting.
Yeah.
Um...
But also at any time, too, so if somebody does, next week, an idea pops in their head, they can always contact Patty and say, hey, I have this great idea, would you mind bringing it to the, to the working group and see what they think of it?
Yeah, so...
I'm just, I guess what I, I just want some general direction from the broader board about, you know, what we're doing, and you know that we're working on this plan, and we're going to administer a survey again, but last year was kind of the first time, so I felt like that's all we kind of accomplished last year, but this year, we kind of have that to build off of, and so...
What are you talking about?
Well...
Amazing presence at the...
I felt like, I felt that's all I did last year, let's just put it that way.
Like I said, you need to sort of community out, you had that.
Yeah, well, that was this year. That's kind of this FY.
It's just...
Yeah.
It was an action.
Yeah. All right.
So I don't have any ideas, but I will, a little feedback, as I will say, you know, the things that have been going on have been great, you know, a lot more outreach, a lot more presence than I've seen in my time here for the committee, so...
Oh, good.
The work that's been going on, I would say that, you know, my feedback would be that it's been good stuff.
Okay, good.
But I don't have any ideas going forward.
All right, that's fine.
So keep it up.
Yeah, you're awesome. Keep working.
We have our place for the school group at Oktoberfest, which I believe is October...
Is that on Columbus Day weekend? It normally is.
So to potentially be indigenous people.
No, it's sort of early.
Oh, yeah, right.
For us anyways, schools.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, I will make sure I let you know, but we've already done a meeting for it.
Okay.
So we don't have a resource number.
Okay.
Excellent.
Okay, next, so we have to, just to share out where we had our meeting with the town manager, assistant town manager, we had a pretty robust conversation about this topic. And I think we sort of landed where we were going to look at working through the MOU that we have in regards to the custodians with that route. They, there'd be a lot of things to work out, but it seemed to be moving in a direction where principals would have, or school personnel would have more input and oversight on the custodial roles. I think we landed with...
Landed what, I'm sorry?
No, it was, all of the options were discussed, and what we said was we needed to bring it back to the committee to kind of share the feedback from the town manager and assistant town manager, which was really good kind of thinking. I feel like it was a great discussion, and then you would direct us of where we would go next. And so, do you want me to keep talking about what they said? Okay. So the, one of the options that was put out on the table was using the MOU as the vehicle through which we change the way, or better support the custodians in our buildings to meet the needs of the kids, and giving the principals the control over the individuals in their buildings. And so by adapting the MOU and the evaluation part of those employees, and it was custodians not maintenance, it would be something under the lines of the principals are doing the evaluation in terms of their interaction with kids, interaction in the building, that type of thing, and then there would still be a DPW component of overseeing the sort of technical pieces of the custodial job. So that was probably the biggest option we discussed in the most detail, but everything was on the table in terms of where, and we really just wanted, we just didn't want to speak for the committee in any way. We just wanted, told them, we wanted to open the lines of communication.
So maybe this is a good topic for the next finance working group, start there.
Because I know me, I think this is, just me speaking, but I, because I'm the one that's been pushing for this so hard, I think this is a great interim step, but I still, my ultimate goal is for the custodians to be part of the school this way. And if it takes five years or past my tenure, that's fine, but I think that we need to, I think we should have a final goal in mind, and having given more MOU power to the principals while they still have a supervisor that doesn't answer to the principals, and the fact that we have to have an MOU to control people that are in our buildings is not the endgame, right? That's just a, I think, a Band-Aid, so...
One of the things we did discuss, though, was the financial implication of that.
Right, right.
So that's certainly a finance working group conversation, but just for the whole committee of, if they come back to the school completely, the principals can't oversee the nuts and bolts parts of the custodial role, they just can't. It's not their, it's not in their, they're not going to oversee scheduling and, you know, all of that, ordering materials, any of the OSHA, you know, that's just, it's not how. So in most districts where the custodians work for the district, there's a lead, and we have lead custodians in each building, but there's a head of buildings and grounds or maintenance or facilities who works for the school and oversees all of the custodians, and that does have its own financial...
Well, I think that we, there's a way to get around, and we'd have to have something hybrid, because we don't control maintenance. So the 80% of a facilities manager's job is maintenance of grounds and buildings, not supervising the custodians, right? Yeah, he's going to order stuff, and he's probably the lead guy to do risk analysis and OSHA regulation, stuff like that. But I don't think we have to hire a $90,000 a year facilities manager.
No.
You know, I think, there's other ways around that, because I know what you're talking about and the way that other schools are set up, and we're never going to have all of the maintenance and custodian stuff underneath the umbrella, but I think it's just going to be a fun experiment.
So the impact on the town side is if custodians came under, I mean, there is a person who has that responsibility, what happens if that was job?
Right, and again, that's why I said, I think this is a long-term discussion, it's got a lot of moving pieces, and we can't solve this in two meetings, so...
But is it something the committee wants us to continue to talk about, shifting the MOU at this point? Because we have, we signed it for this year.
Well, it doesn't get signed yet.
It's not, oh, it doesn't?
So in any of this discussion, was it talked about, so I know we had an issue, I believe it was last year, where they were moving custodians around without really checking with any of the administration? So has that been discussed? Because that there...
Yes. That would, that would fall under the principal.
Okay.
The principal would determine which personnel were in their buildings under this MOU shift that we discussed.
But, and I know there's a big difference between saying the principals will have something, and then there being something in some kind of documentation or some kind of regulation or procedure or whatever, policy that allows them to overstep the principals at, under a certain circumstance. And I think that needs to be looked at, or at least, because I understand where they're coming from.
Would you say that last sentence again?
So...
I'll believe it when I see it. That's for sure.
Yeah, exactly, right. So I can tell you all day that the principals will have, you know, the control over who works in their building, but then there might be a policy or something somewhere else in DPW's realm that allows them to overstep the principal when they, you know, feel fit or under certain circumstance or anything like that. And I think we've got to be careful, or at least understand what that might entail. Because I do understand where they're coming from with the whole review part, you know, nothing against Mark, but what does Mark know about what a custodian does from the technical part, you know, as far as, you know, all their cleaning duties and all that, you know what I mean? That's not his job, he's not trained to do that. DPW is. So I do understand that piece, too, but I think, to me, I do, personally, I think that is a good way to pursue it, but I'm concerned about DPW overstepping, I wouldn't say overstepping, but being able to somehow move personnel around in given circumstances and not leaving it 100% up to the principals.
So the town manager did indicate that the next step, if we, if the school committee wanted us to continue pursuing this, would be to sit with the director of DPW, you know, have that person in the room. And certainly, anything, any language would not, we would have people, well, you'd be looking at, but also I would imagine attorneys would look at. But I got the sense, and maybe it's, maybe you got a different sense, but I got a sense of, that the town manager really seemed to understand this point after this meeting in a way that I hadn't before.
Mm-hmm.
And so I don't, I think we would have support from that side in a way that I would not have imagined we would have before, and maybe I'm naive, I don't know.
Well, I mean, and we've also opened the line of communication now, and one would hope that Patty could pick up the phone and talk to the town manager and say, okay, well, this is the MOU, and somehow somebody got moved around. What do you think?
Yeah. In the current contract, the custodians have their own sort of contract and association with that. There is that to...
You can see some of the layers?
There are. But if you want us to, then that would be our next step, would be with him, the town manager and assistant town manager and director of DPW, and tease it out, and then just keep bringing the stuff back to you.
We'll have some feedback on that.
I think, well, when you guys were first speaking, I was, my question was going to be, were you persuaded that we don't need to have the custodians under the control of the schools? And it doesn't sound like you were, but that this is, as Jeff said, an interim step that will help alleviate some of the problems that we've had, potentially, that I'm aware of, anyway, in terms of people being moved without the knowledge of folks like that. I think the piece for the working group is really the longer-term strategy, the financial implications of that, and I, I think Jeff, I'm in lockstep with Jeff's position, so I'm totally comfortable with that being discussed at that level until there's more to decide at this level, but I'm encouraged that the town manager seems open to our perspective, and the proof is in the pudding, though, so we'll see what happens. But, yeah, go forth. Go forth and compromise.
Go forth and, I like that.
Yeah.
Noted.
Yeah.
All right. So does anybody disagree that they should move forward in the current talks?
Disagree.
You got anything to say?
I don't disagree.
All right.
Indigenous Peoples' Day, that is, we talked about that at the last meeting, and you're going to vote on that today. I did, you know, we had heard from Tricia Collinui, I also heard that from Jesse Baird at the tribe. I completely support a change from Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day on the MPS school calendar. Masquish Wampanoag tribe has already made the change in order to take the opportunity to educate others about the peoples that have inhabited this continent since creation, placed the indigenous peoples here, their histories and ever-changing cultures. Thank you on behalf of the Masquish Wampanoag tribe for your efforts and ever cooperative stance regarding indigenous cultures. So we already know that they had changed, so this, the decision that would be changed. So you would basically be voting to also change. We already approved the calendars.
Okay. So I will make a motion that we change all references of Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day in any document propagated by the school department or school committee. Is that covered or anything?
Yes, the only place it appears is in the city contract for the year around the 40s, who are actually giving holidays, actually making ours to it. Where it's referred to as Columbus Day.
Have the handbooks already been printed, I would imagine, right now? Because we voted on them.
Yeah, not just calendar, you can have a list.
Paul, do we have an issue? Because what's on the agenda for the vote is the change to the calendar.
Oh, yes.
Right. Yeah, so I think we just have to make a motion just on that.
Doesn't necessarily.
Oh, okay.
Because it is an item of agenda, so it doesn't have to specifically be the calendar. Because it can be amended.
Okay.
So voting on changing, the meat and potatoes of it is that we're voting to change the language of Columbus Day for the district. On the calendar or anything else, it's all the same, you know what I mean? So the only reason why in any other documentation it's called Columbus Day is because the calendar reflects it as Columbus Day. Is that what I'm saying?
No, it's reflected on the federal holiday.
Well, I understand that, but we put it on the calendar because it's a federal holiday, which kind of cascades into every other document because of it. So if it's on the calendar, it's one thing. You don't put it in another document as something different. It just doesn't make any sense. Is that what I'm saying?
I do. I just wonder whether that's legal, but I, because I'm, I'm totally in support of the, what's on the table, but I don't know if we can change a, a legal reference to Columbus Day, which is the federal holiday, in our contracts. So you tell me. You're the chair. I don't know. But I just don't want to have to do this again. So if we could just maybe handle the calendar now and then deal with the.
We can do that, because I don't know if we'd be able to even change the contract anyway, so.
Well, Unicef is up for, this is their year.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. So you weren't saying we'd actually change those two. You just meant, you were just indicating that's where the references are. Okay. I got it.
Well, I guess you have a simplification. We can just do the calendar, and then it's understood that anything that's on the calendar is going to be in any other documentation anyway for the schools.
I'm not sure that's understood.
It wouldn't have to be understood. So if I make reference to, even on the contracts, the holiday, if the, just like we went through the whole thing of the start of the school day, if it's in the calendar as, you know, school starts on this day or whatever, then that's what we go by for the contracts. And that's what that whole argument was about. So if it's on the school calendar as Indigenous People's Day and not Columbus Day, well, we go by what's on the school documentation. Is that what I'm saying?
I see what you're saying, but I just want to cover all bases by saying any other document.
Make whatever motion you want.
Well, that's the motion you made.
We don't have a second yet.
Any second?
Can I amend the motion and just?
Sure.
Move to change the FY 1819 school calendar from Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day?
Second.
Can I make, can I make a second?
Go ahead. Were you going to?
I was going to make a suggestion to change the calendar starting with, that way it's indefinite.
Okay. I'll amend the motion. Yeah, we did change the, change from Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day starting at the FY 1819 school calendar and beyond.
Have a second?
I second, unless you want to.
We'll go ahead.
Okay, all right.
All right, motion by Jeff, second by Nicole.
I just don't want our, so the discussion piece, I just didn't want the motion to get negated because we overstepped.
Yeah, well, we can add this in at any time.
That's fine.
Okay, that's all.
I know you're trying to be efficient.
I was just, well, I was just thinking about the school manual is going to be produced long before by next school committee meeting, so. But if that can be changed by us saying the calendar. This is cool.
School handles.
Oh, manual. I thought you said menu.
I did say manual. That's what I call a handbook.
No, I did menu.
Menu?
Lunch menu is okay.
Hearing in here is bad.
Yeah, it's hard to hear.
But if that can flow down to everything else, then I'm fine with it.
Yep.
Do you agree that, I mean?
The other comment up here, in terms of the school's perspective, where else Columbus Day is used? Is it in your handbook, calendar, or is it?
It's in the handbook. Can you say the letter of?
On the calendar.
Okay.
Okay.
It's on the records.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, I, I mean, it would be ridiculous for us to not have it listed in the school calendar and then list it Columbus Day everywhere else, so.
Yeah. So it should reflect the calendar.
Got it. Yeah, got it. Understood.
All right, I withdraw my motion, even though it wasn't seconded.
But you amended his motion, but it wasn't even seconded.
He amended my motion, yes.
You said your motion wasn't even seconded, so.
Yes, it was seconded.
No, she seconded my motion.
She seconded his motion.
Oh, my gosh.
So we have, we have a motion by Jeff, seconded by Nicole.
Okay, so forget George's.
Forget George's.
Everybody else knows.
I just want to be clear, so. So you're not really amending any motion?
He's not amending. It's just a motion.
Just making one.
Just making a motion. Okay. That's all. I just want to make sure.
The motion that wasn't seconded.
Hey, thank you for bringing this to the committee's attention and for your leadership on it. I really appreciate it, and I don't know why we didn't think of it sooner, so.
Welcome.
Okay.
I'm believing Vivian ambidwight in this panel.
Any other discussion?
No.
George? One more time, George? Nicole, how do you vote?
Yes.
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 And yes, unanimous.
Oh, it is so hot in here.
It absolutely is.
So there is air conditioning in this space, correct? But there is air conditioning in this space. And we actually physically requested air conditioning for this meeting and the last meeting, right? We shouldn't have air conditioning.
Probably in writing.
I'm just asking that, that we requested air conditioning for this meeting. Okay, I'm just making sure.
And last night's performance as well.
And last night's performance as well.
Drug story theater in it.
And there was no air conditioning. Okay, thank you.
And it's usually in writing.
So subtle, Jeff. I'm just asking.
It really needs to, now, there's a person whose office is over here, so, and it really needs to start being on for the next few days. I assume that we have requested, we have an all-day event here on Monday in the auditorium, and there will be air conditioning. But we had to call today because we had an event in here today where we asked you to space with human beings in it. And, but for a phone call, it wasn't going to be turned on.
Did Amber turn it on?
It did, but.
Is that done through school dude or is that done through something else?
It should, well, on the facility use form that everybody does when they want into space, I don't know if there's a spot to say air conditioning. You usually check that.
Always, in light.
And write it on the bottom.
You do have to make sure you check it.
Yeah, that's awesome. It's amazing when it's 90 degrees outside. I'm just curious. Thank you very much for filling me in.
Okay.
They voted on that.
So I did.
Did they vote on that?
Did you stay? Yes.
Yes, we did.
We cleared that out.
We're all done. Moving on.
Okay. So just as a follow-up to the August retreat that you had, I don't know if you want to share any conversation about that, because this is our first public meeting since then. I did include in the packet your self-evaluation that we looked at that night. And also, not in the packet, but passed out, looks like this, was sort of the draft we discussed, although I'm not sure about the 2B down below. But we wanted to sort of make sure everybody played around with wording on those goals for school year 1819. And just to confirm to the public that the first half of the retreat, we all participated in Epic Street.
Well, it's good. Lots of questions, too. Lots of answers. Does anybody have anything on that?
I just wanted to thank you guys for doing all the hard work. I mean, you know me, I've always been a big proponent for retreats, and they get, they get better every time we have them. And even though I was.
We appreciated the two-dimensional version.
Yeah, exactly. Even though I was electronic. Max Headroom.
Avatar.
But I don't know, so I think I said this to everybody.
Yeah, you did. And I, I looked at it online and I thought there wasn't any wording that I would change. So I'm okay with the 2A and 2B, right?
No, yes, yes. Sorry.
Was that a look of surprise?
It was!
Same look, yeah.
And we did discuss this at pretty great length at the retreat, so.
The only big one was 2B. We definitely, we slightly tweaked 1B with reading the operations manual, which is awesome. 1A is staying the same, and 2A is the same, and then.
Yeah, 2B is right. I think that's when I, when you, I was freaking out a little bit when we locked out because I was like, oh, my God, do we have to do this? And, and I think calling it communicating the plan is, is really our role. Yeah, I think it looks good.
Yep, so, well, I guess we'll look to put this on the next agenda for at least a first read on the goals, I guess? No?
Yeah.
Did we?
And it doesn't need votes.
It doesn't?
No.
We don't have to vote?
There's nothing that says you have to do.
We don't have to vote on goals?
You don't have to make goals.
That sounds awful.
I think that we should have, I mean, a, a public yea or nay about if we support the goals or not.
Maybe.
It takes, you know, milliseconds.
Yeah. I guess it wouldn't hurt.
No, no, it definitely hurts.
Well, then I'll give it another look.
I've been knowing I have to vote on it, I won't change it.
That was good.
I knew that was.
All righty. I just want to do it to try to, well, that's all. All right, next is the school committee meeting times?
So I would like to see if there could be a conversation of how open you all are to adjusting the start time for our meetings moving forward.
Thank goodness.
Changing from 6:30.
That's my phone.
Whether, you know, the summer meetings we held at 5:00 and how difficult that is or isn't for this, because I know Don's not here, and whether there are any ways to move them up moving forward to 5:30.
I'm totally in favor of moving it up to 5:00.
I may have difficulty hitting 5:00 every time, but I, I do support moving the meetings up.
5:30, I think, might be a good, especially for me, too. Might be a good compromise.
And this is with us getting a little bit of food before we roll in here. Oh, I wasn't asking for that, but thank you very much.
The meeting started at 5:00.
I'll bring drinks if we start at 5:00.
So I'm, I would love to do it earlier. I think the reason it was easier to do 5:00 for the summer meetings is because there was only one a month. The, I think probably part of the rationale for having the 6:30 starts, at least one, was that the collaborative meetings start at 5:00. And they sometimes overlap with this, this meeting, and so I frequently go there from 5:00 to 6:00 and then hot-foot it from Osterville over here because they need quorum sometimes to have people there. So I'm all in favor of, of doing it earlier, and let me just take a look at the, this, because we have the published calendar of all the meeting, but I already noticed that there are a number of overlaps, so. But I mean, having said all that, my priority is to this table, and, you know, I can just let them know in advance that I cannot make those meetings that, that overlap with ours. But I think that might have been one of the rationales for keeping it at 6:30, so. But on a personal note, I could be here as early as 5:00 or 5:30, generally.
So do you want to put it on for the next meeting again?
Yes, because Don's here and have more of a discussion.
For the 5:30 and then Nicole will be able to share how many conflicts there are.
What time is the next meeting?
That one's back to 6:30, correct? The other one's back to 6:30.
Does that need a vote? To, to change time? No, 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 next time. I'm asking if you're putting it on the agenda.
I would believe so, because we voted on the entire calendar with times. The times are on the calendar, correct?
Yes.
Did we vote to change the times to 5:00?
We did.
Oh, okay.
When we approved the calendar.
It was on our calendar.
It was on our calendar.
It's on our calendar written that way.
Oh, okay.
When we approved the year, school committee meetings.
So that means the next one's going to be 6:30, no matter what we do?
Yes.
But if we put a star, unless we're a man.
So remember when we, when we approved the year, the chart, at all school committee meetings? When we approved it for the year, we approved it with having the summer meetings 5:00.
Oh, okay.
But we approved the rest of it at 6:30.
Right, right, okay, I got you. I got you.
So if we were to change.
Oh, for the.
Yeah, we did, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so if we were to change, like, next meeting or whatever.
I said we changed the whole year to 5:00.
No, no, no.
Cool.
Okay, so the next one's back to normal time?
Yes, so next meeting, September 12th, will be at 6:30 at Quashnet again, correct? Yes, and then we can.
You approve.
Yes, and the new library.
Mary Kate's looking directly at me.
I'm going to pass her the comment about her space.
Never limiting it down. Never limiting it down.
And then from there, hopefully, we have the full committee and we can discuss going forward. Anything else on that? All right. Next is our new business. Does anybody have anything new they want to bring up?
It's not, I guess I could have brought it up during the working group, because I think that's where I might deal with it. But I think you guys have heard me mention earlier that I wanted to do some sort of, it's not really an open house or an orientation, but it's sort of a, a way to teach people about what school committee members do, to encourage more people to run for school committee in the town of Mashpee. And I talked to one of the selectmen about it, too, and just this idea of, you know, doing kind of a, some sort of meet and greet, informational session, I think is what we were calling it, where there's really two of us that, to allow, not breaking any rules. But to, and to just sort of publicize it as like some type of evening session or even coffee session or something, and just see if we have any, if we can start recruiting people or generating interest in, or most importantly, helping people who think they may want to run understand the responsibilities and roles of the school committee. When I wanted to run, you know, I'd been a parent in the district for years, and when I wanted to run, like, one of the first people I called was Hope Hanscom.
Who didn't work here.
It didn't work here at the time, but just, and because she was an assistant superintendent elsewhere, and you really helped me understand what was within our purview and what wasn't and, and things like that. So I think when people think about what we do, I don't know that they're always have, I, I don't know that they know exactly what we're allowed to do and what we're not allowed to do and what we get involved in and what we don't. So I just thought it might be helpful. And I also think that, you know, we need some succession planning. I am so impressed with the contribution that Janice Mills made to this community, especially being a transplant myself, you know, not being from, growing up here, and, but I cannot do this for 38 years. And so, and I don't think any of us can for different reasons. So I, I just think we need to start grooming, we need to start grooming educated interest and awareness in this role because I personally find it really rewarding and fun and, you know, and, and I would love somebody's help if anybody is interested in joining me on that. And if there's more than one of you that would like to help, you can draw straws, but, but, and also I'd love your input about how best to do that, you know, and maybe we do one or two. But the idea was to do it in kind of maybe before the holidays or maybe after the holidays in January, before you have to pull papers, I think in February or something, so that, you know.
Would you ever see that as a possibility of sort of merging, like a night event with town government? Could they have trouble getting members on their board? And what does the board of selectmen member do? What does the finance committee?
Well, that was exactly what we had talked about, was the board of selectmen.
Almost like a job fair type thing.
Job fair, and then they get stuff in and, and whatever the other enticement would be to get people there, that would be a nice. And it would be a nice collaboration between the schools and.
That's what I had talked to one of the selectmen about, was that they have the same issue. You know, they don't get a whole slate of people running for that office either. And, you know, they, between the two boards, you have a lot of authority in the town and they're pretty significant, you know, decision-makers in the community, maybe the selectmen more so than us. But, but anyway, so yeah, I think they're interested in at least one of them, but I have to, if you guys are cool with the idea, I could go, we could pursue that a little bit further.
I'll work with you on it.
You will?
Sure.
Okay. Does anybody else?
I would be willing to.
No, I'm all for it. I just, you know, to play devil's advocate, we just have to be careful of the words that we're throwing around, succession planning and stuff. You know, as a committee, we can't go pick somebody.
No.
To, you know, to, to, to replace us and then stand, you know, I, so I just, I just want to be very careful of the way we word that and stuff. I mean, anybody can stand out there singly and say, I support this person to be the next. School committee member. I just want to be careful.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Even if you ended up, I know town meeting gets a little bit, but if you back on something, or even if the different boards had, you know, nail a little fly or handout, what does it, you know, what does the school committee member do? Just go with it items. What does the selectman do? Just because something they could take home and then process it's part of it, so.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Run away screaming and crying. Never mind.
So that was, that was the only thing I wanted to mention.
That's a perfect thing to send to the outreach board, I think.
I think so, too, but I just didn't want to assume that without.
That's perfect. That's like an out-of-the-box outreach. That's awesome.
All right, good. Anything else? Any other new business, anything anyone wants to see on the agenda next week? All right, subcommittee reports?
Nothing for me.
None?
The, well, it wasn't really, it was, I guess it was, the addiction task force supported at the high school last night, Drug Story Theater. force supported at the high school last night, Drugstore Theater. Um, it was, I don't know, it's a bad time of year in order to have that sort of thing, but our guess was about a hundred people showed up. Uh, they asked.
I think it was like.
Well, he asked, uh, when he asked for a quarter of the audience to stand up, there were about twenty-five people that stood up there. And he said, this is about a quarter of the audience. That's why I'm getting.
It wasn't as many as we hoped.
Yeah.
It's tough, it's August.
Yeah. But the people who came?
Hmm. The people that came got a lot of, there was some excellent questions. Um, like, if any else was just too bad, it wasn't well-attended.
One of the things that came out of an after discussion, and that was, and based on one of the girl's story, sharing, you know, her addiction and how she found it hard to sort of stay going to the group for the therapy piece, so she comes for therapy through this connection. But it would be really great to somehow create an in-house, whether it was labeled like a study hall, but it was more of a, you know, about counseling, or give it a name where kids here who are facing challenges would be able to get supports. And they may not have gotten to the level of, you know, being sent away to a rehab center yet, but where they could have come back, and we don't know. So something more in-house that was there for them, where they could have other kids as well. So I would love to explore. And it could end up taking on sort of an after-school feel to it, but I think trying to provide something closer by to those who need it reviewed, something to explore. And it would have to be done with, you know, counselors or school psychologists or.
Yeah, I think we actually have a lot of that in place already, I would say, at the middle high school. We have girls groups that we, and the counselors actually do a lot of what you just described. And we're starting that Bright program, which is a program for kids who are hospitalized or are school-avoidant, and they can come, they don't have to be on an IP, that they can come, just to get them into the building. Um, they're going to be able to come into a very safe, very therapeutic, very supportive environment. I mean, I was actually, could speak to all that more, but, um, but yeah, we could always do, but these are the steps we're taking because of those needs that we, you know, like, have. So. We also like to bring them back this year, um, for another day performance and then a night performance, in the hopes that families would come out at night after the kids have seen it during the day. So we'll be looking back, too.
Good.
Don't worry, Mr. Fontana.
Anybody else?
What is this?
Uh.
Committee or.
Committee reports.
Any committee report?
I don't have a committee report.
No, me neither.
I was just thinking about our attendance at that. Um, have we met since we went to the, um.
Yes, we did.
Mass?
Yes, well, we, we had the, uh, retreat.
Retreat. Yes, so they, um, I attended a session on social emotional learning and the, also on school start times implementation. And, um, it's funny, you crack me up sometimes. I get these things from you, and I'm like, you're just like in lockstep with just sort